One minute, one minute, please. Counselor. Right, some rocks. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to Albany City Council Meeting on Wednesday, August ninth, 2023 at 6:00 PM. I'd like, Gabe, would you call the meeting to order? And would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have roll call, please?
Okay, there we go. Yes, Your Honor. Mayor Alex Johnson II.
Here.
Counselors Newton.
President.
Novak.
Here.
Montague.
Here.
McGee, Kupczynski.
Here.
And Smith.
Here.
Five counselors present, Your Honor.
Thank you. And Counselor McGee is excused this evening. Next is reading a proclamation, Suicide Awareness Month, on page two of your packet. Suicide Awareness Month, September 2023. Whereas suicide is often a result of an untreated mental health condition, and whereas suicidal thoughts, much like mental health conditions, can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, background, and whereas more women than men attempt suicide, though men are nearly four times more likely to die by suicide, and whereas suicide is the second leading cause of death among people aged ten through thirty-four, and the tenth leading cause of death in overall the United States, and whereas for every youth, suicide, it is estimated that one hundred to two hundred others attempted suicide, and whereas lesbian, gay, and bisexual youth are four times more likely to attempt suicide than straight youth, and transgender adults are nearly twelve times more likely to attempt suicide than the general population, and whereas community members of Albany should have access to the resources they need to discuss suicide prevention and to seek help, and whereas people experiencing mental health crisis can reach the suicide and crisis hotline by dialing nine eight eight. Now, therefore, I, Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor of the City of Albany, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2023 as Suicide Awareness Month in the City of Albany, and I do also call upon residents to shift their perception of mental health and spread hope and vital information to people affected by suicide and suicidal thoughts. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this ninth day of August 2023, Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor, September eleventh Remembrance Day, September eleven, 2023. Whereas nearly three thousand citizens of the United States of America were killed on September eleventh, two thousand and one, in New York City, Pennsylvania, and Washington, DC, as a result of unprovoked and cowardly terrorist attacks, and we pay tribute to the men and women who perished and reflect on the bravery and courage of our civilians and our military first responders and emergency personnel for their quick and selfless actions, and whereas it is also important to remember the countless families who were forever changed by the loss of a loved one because of these horrendous attacks, and whereas September marks the twenty-second anniversary of that fateful day, which renewed patriotism throughout the nation and spurred American citizens into civil action, and whereas throughout the state of Oregon, individuals, organizations, and communities will gather on the twenty-second anniversary and honor our nation and the memory of those who lost their lives on September eleventh, two thousand and one. Now, therefore, I, Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor of the City of Albany, do hereby proclaim September eleventh, 2023, to be Remembrance Day in Albany, and I invite all residents who remember with eternal respect those whose lives were suddenly and without cause taken from them. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Albany to be affixed this ninth day of August 2023, Alexander D. Johnson II, Mayor. Thank you very much for that. Next on the agenda, special presentation.
So Bobby and Crystal, will you come forward? I must apologize to you, because I've invited you here under false pretenses.
Well, we got messed up and everything.
I have, I've asked you to come here to present, and you'll have, we don't want to waste your presentation, so certainly come on up here and turn and face the audience. And what we would like to do, instead of, or in addition to hearing your presentation, Mayor, if you go stand on the other side of them, come up here, turn around, picture of you there, okay? So we've invited you here because we want to thank you, okay, on the occasion of the one-year anniversary of Giving a Hoot. So what you, what you probably, well, many of you may not know, is that Giving a Hoot was started by these two a little over a year ago. They put an intense amount of effort into a grassroots effort to try to keep our city clean, and they just got their 501(c)(3) designation, so now they're a full-blown nonprofit. So we wanted to congratulate you. I want to give the mic over to the mayor, and we've got a couple of things to give you.
So Bobby and Crystal met with me, and we talked about this particular program, and of course, with the weather at the time, I didn't think it was going to go forward, but when they called me to come and participate in the first few, we were out there. People were joining us. People were honking their horns. Good job, guys. I was spilling coffee on myself. But I will tell you this, it is wonderful to see the number of people have come out and continue to come out and support keeping our city clean. So don't pollute. We're Giving a Hoot. So congratulations to both of you, and I think Peter has something for both of you.
So this, this is the Great Neighbor Award, the first ever inaugural Great Neighbor Award, presented to Crystal DeFoe, in recognition of your tireless energy devoted to building a volunteer organization to clean and beautify the City of Albany. Giving a Hoot has energized citizens and made our great neighborhoods even better. Mayor, would you present that?
Congratulations. Bobby, we have the same presentation for you. Thank you. You really are great neighbors.
Well, we're gonna make a presentation, but you know, Crystal and I, January of 2022, we were sitting around, and we decided, you know, let's get up and, instead of sitting around complaining, let's get up and do something about it. And we'll tell you how that happened. Yeah, and we're so excited. We've had so much community support, and it just keeps growing, and as it catches on, and we're expanding little by little, but we're, we couldn't be more happy with the results, so.
We've been thrilled with the number of people that have joined alongside of us, so.
That's what pushed us to become a nonprofit. People kept trying to give us money, and we're like, well, you can't. In fact, one church bought these vests for us because they wouldn't take no for an answer. So they went and bought them, so.
Saturday, the nineteenth, we'll be doing our next cleanup, and we'll talk about that a little bit, but yes, seven to ten, meet at Awesome Do Four Funeral Home Parking Lot, and bring your rakes, shovels, and we have.
Yeah? You want us to go ahead?
Yes, please.
Okay.
That's quite a surprise.
I know.
Okay.
Okay, well, this first part, hello. I was gonna introduce us, Bobby Williams Herrera, Crystal DeFoe, and we are Giving a Hoot. You know that.
And we told you, it really was started in 2022. We are at our year anniversary, and it was around my dinner table that we came up with a name. I have a little Cincy pot with an owl, and we were throwing all sorts of things around, and I looked over at it, and I said, how about Giving a Hoot? So that's a part of the history there. Bobby's gonna tell you what our mission statement, our actual legal mission statement is.
So like Crystal said, we were established as a corporation back in 2022, and as of June of 2023, we are officially a nonprofit, so we're really excited about that, and the mission statement for Giving a Hoot is simply to improve the appearance of the City of Albany, Oregon. It's our belief that a beautiful city improves its livability, thusly increases its economic viability.
So these are examples of what we were sitting around discussing. So we had had several conversations about how things were looking, and we were complaining, like we said, and this is just two of the pictures I found of our initial site.
So our first step, as Alex mentioned, was we thought, okay, where do we start? Well, let's start with Peter and Alex. So we met with them, and we were initially trying to find out if there was an existing community that we could join and be a part of, and as we expressed our concerns and some of our frustrations, it became clear that, you know, as they told us, that that type of community didn't exist currently, and to go forward and investigate what you, do what you want.
Go forth and prosper.
Yeah, well, not do what you want, but you know, you get the idea. And so we pulled out a map of the city, and we circled the areas most concerning to us, and the three immediate areas, which we refer to as the gateways of the city. We also discovered that those are ODOT roads, so.
So these were the three sites. There's the I-5 and Knox Butte interchange over there by McDonald's. That's what you see up here in the top left, where Spring Hill and Highway twenty come together, so you've got the bridge coming over to Ellsworth, and then the train station interchange, we lovingly call it, ODOT calls it the ninety-nine overpass, I think they told me. We eventually wanted to add the Saniam Highway I-5 area, but they have since told us that area there is too dangerous for them to give us a permit for it. So these were the first ones that we decided to focus on. We only did Highway twenty at Spring Hill up to the bridge, but we've since added coming down Lyons and Ellsworth all the way to the train station, so that's gonna connect us, but that also allows us to have miners help us. We haven't allowed miners up to this point because the traffic moves so fast in the other areas, but we feel like on Lyons and Ellsworth, cars are going a little bit slower, and we can handle having miners pick up trash with us in that area, so.
They can stay on the sidewalks.
Yep.
These are images from our first workday, September third, and thank you, you'll see Alex and Peter. We were really excited. We didn't know how it was gonna go.
And Marilyn.
And Marilyn. Sorry, Marilyn. No, I can't forget Marilyn, because she's like been at a lot of them.
A lot of them.
A lot. We always appreciate. We didn't know how it was gonna go, because, and since this and every other cleanup since, it's a drop-in volunteer kind of thing. So since the first day, we've had ten workdays with an average of fourteen volunteers for each workday, with a combined four hundred and twenty-nine hours, volunteer hours, so. And this, this one is the before and aftershock of the I-5 Knox Butte area. That was our first project, and everyone definitely broke a sweat on that one, so, and it went great.
This one is the Spring Hill twenty. One of the biggest areas there was that slanted cement thing for the bridge. You can see how it looked when we started, and on the right there, he's still in the middle of it, but that's how it looks now after we finished that cleanup. We've done that three times now, I think.
So here's just a few more photos of work crews that have put in so many hours. This is the photo that includes Alex with the coffee on his shirt.
On his shirt, you'll notice. That's the coffee right there.
He was so excited to come help us. He's like, okay, I spilled my coffee. I'm like, no, the dirt and garbage doesn't mind.
That's not sweat, we're saying, is it?
Yeah, it's a combo, right? So we are especially grateful to Alex and Peter, Marilyn.
Yes, very much.
Who continually help us.
Absolutely. So if you recognize this, I have a little graphic here, but it's often referred to lovingly as the Bermuda Triangle in Albany, and it's funny, because I always call it that, and then we sat in Keith's office at ODOT, and he's like, we call it that all the time, so. But what I wanted to draw your attention to is, I think you all know how pretty it looks with the flowers and how well-maintained it is. That's really what our goal is. We feel like all the entry points to, wow.
All right, the microphones work.
We'll keep going. You wanna say keep going? Or you want to recess?
All right.
Two more slides, we're done.
Yeah, we were so close. If you have a card with your email, we have an email list that we send out.
And her phone number.
Okay, we can add that to you. There's, we can add you to it. There's no action on your part unless you want to show up, so. So you were drinking and driving.
Isn't it, it's a huge difference.
So nice.
It is. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We'll do Ellsworth next, and then.
Yeah.
Well, we're hoping with the train station, maybe we can finish off that little part of Lyons.
But coming up Ellsworth, that'll make a huge difference, too, on the backside of the DH, especially where it's gotten so bad there.
Yeah.
No, no. And I did have a discussion, though, when I was doing the presentation at Rotary, they said, oh, we need to probably get out there and clean that up, because we're the ones that initiated that whole project, and I said, yes, that would be fantastic. So.
Yeah.
Yes, that would be, that's really our goal, so.
You're, you're a pro now.
You sure can.
Yeah. So much easier. Good. You just save up your energy to come clean up somewhere else. This is cool.
Have to talk louder than this. All right.
Yeah, no.
No problem. You just tell me when to go, and I'll.
I'm gonna call the meeting back into session at eighteen twenty, or six twenty PM. Please, continue.
So as I was saying, that areas are inspiration of what we would like, the other areas that we're working on to look like eventually. I failed to mention earlier that each of those areas, we went through Adopt a Highway program in order to be on ODOT land, and they do give us the bags and the pickers, and we're able to dispose of everything we pick up at their site. So that's how this initially got started also, so that's a piece I left out there. Okay, this brings us to Bobby.
So this brings us to our biggest project to date. The City of Albany Parks and Rec generously loaned us Jay Sharp, the city forester, to design a landscape for the ramp at the train station interchange. You can see some of the color-coded areas, and he put together, when we submitted Jay's design to ODOT, they approved it, the city approved it, he put together what plants to put there, how many. In fact, part of our project on the nineteenth is going to be doing some clearing and cleaning up of that space, getting ready for planting towards the end of October. So we're currently raising funds to purchase the plants, and so that we can put them there.
It's quite a feat. ODOT only allows certain plants. They have to be a certain height, all of that, and so we needed professional. And so we needed professional help and Jay was very gracious to lend that to us. So as we said, a lot of people have mentioned to us, they're so happy we're doing this. They've joined us. They didn't, they were frustrated with the same weeds in the cracks, but didn't know what to do or how to go about it. So as we move forward, I think our goal obviously is to make those places look beautiful, but maybe cause other people to look at their neighborhoods and give a hoot about where they're at. And if they need help or support to get the volunteers, we're happy to do what we can. So.
So what I'm gonna do for you is that when I go to schools next year, I will bring this up and share about the program. So teachers can encourage their kids to do some community service work. That's fantastic.
Absolutely.
Any questions for them at all? You guys want to continue or is there more?
Nope, that was it.
Any questions from the council?
No question, just to thank you. Thanks again. Love what you do. I'm gonna join you.
See you all on the 19th then.
You have a way. Thank you so much, both of you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next on the council's agenda is business from the public. Gabe, do we have anyone signed up to speak? We have Carol Davies is first up to speak. You have three minutes, Carol.
Hi. Last city council meeting, I spoke about Cote and some of the work that we're doing. And councillor Smith asked me to talk to you a little bit about what is going on at Marvin's Garden, the city-owned campsite. As you may know, Cote has unofficially taken over the responsibility of getting everything well organized and making sure that people have access to services. In addition to us, we also work really closely with Chance and Second Chance Shelter. And we also work with Family Tree Relief Nursery. I think the city did an admirable, an admirable job with the allotted time that they had to get the campsite going. And it does have a lot of positive attributes. I did want to point out some of the deficits that the campsite has. And the first one is there are somewhere in the order between 35 and 40 people who are using both of the campsites and there's one porta potty. The porta potty doesn't get emptied enough. It's current, it very frequently gets overflowing. And if somebody is in there for a while, it really backs up. All of the other people are unable to use it in a timely fashion. I brought this up at the meeting that we have monthly at the fire station. And Will Smith said that it's out of compliance. There are too many people who are using it on a permanent basis. So we need to have at least one more porta potty on the site. And he said that if you all have any questions, you can ask him about it. But he said that it was a health issue. The second issue that I wanted to bring up was lack of water. The, the shelters nearby, they do come on a regular basis, as does Cote. And we distribute water, but it's not nearly enough to keep people hydrated, especially in the heat. And if we had some type of potable water there, I think that it would really go a long way in helping people stay hydrated. There were a number of suggestions that were brought up. I think probably the best one was just having some type of a spigot that's connected to city water, just so people will be able to have enough to drink. I think in the short term, Helping Hands is going to bring a hose over so people can use it. So.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then the third thing is that it's very hot there. We have the gravel and it retains heat. And for most of the campsites, it's unshaded. People have compensated by putting up tarps, but not everybody has access to a tarp and it gets super, super hot out there.
Thank you.
Yeah, if we had some type of canopy or something to shield people from both the heat and the rain when it comes, I think that would also be really helpful.
Thank you, Carol. The three minutes is up.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
Well, that's not for this right now. Thank you very much.
Perfect. Thank you.
Next up is Lisa Grado.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Grado. I'm the executive director of the Albany Downtown Association and I wanted to provide a quick downtown update. First, I'd like to thank the Giving a Hoot folks. Sorry they exited, but they have made a big difference in downtown. Thank you Marilyn for being part of that. And we look forward to partnering with them on future endeavors. We do have a cleanup slated in October and we'll be doing some of the other areas downtown. Our newsletter is out and we're featuring our beautiful downtown flower baskets and want to do a shout out to the city and the support they give us with that, as well as the beautiful ones that grace the city hall here that you provide. Also, we have numerous sponsors and those are all listed on our website and the newsletter. And we thank them for making it possible. Also, Coming to Town Everclear will be playing at the Albany Block Party on September 2nd. So we expect that to be a big event. That's hosted by the soon-to-be Greyhound Tavern. That you may have noticed, the old JP's has been painted and things look much better down there. There's a Meet the Neighbors feature and this one's on American and pub food. So check out some places to go eat. Our volunteer spotlight is on our treasurer, Bob Moore, who has done so much for us, as well as other contributions to our city. And he will be leaving us soon. We are looking actively for a treasurer as he is considering relocating to Portugal. So we also have some other events coming up. The Passport Program in partnership with many downtown businesses and put together by Albany Visitor Association wraps up with an event at the Carousel coming up later this month. The, we've got a movie this Friday, The Princess Bride. Starting, what, for the first 11 years of our movies downtown, they were on the back of the Eagles. And that is where this one will be held since our park is unavailable this year. There will be Pix popcorn, ice cream, candy and sodas starting at around 8:00 and the scouts will be the ones handling the concessions as usual. So we welcome everybody to get lawn chairs, come down, be aware of the heat. I don't think we're gonna probably have kids on blankets. We'll just hope for maybe some overcast toward the end of the day. Movie doesn't start until about 8:55 or whenever it gets dark enough, usually around 9:00 o'clock. And there are some things going on at the Montithouse. There's a play coming up, My Son Pinocchio Jr. at the Albany Civic Theater. Started to mention the carnival at the Carousel on August 19th. And we had a good first Friday with all kinds of fun things. So check this out. There's also some information on the Downtown Association, the Main Street Approach and volunteering with us. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I did buy my tickets already for Pinocchio. I'm excited about that.
And I'll have these available to anyone who wants them afterwards.
Thank you. As a matter of fact, several of the kids that are participating in If I Were Mayor contests are actually in the play. So I'm excited about that. Next on tonight's agenda is Word of Contracts of Contract Increase SS-23-02, Cured and Placed Pipe Projects. Engineer Stacy Belcastro, pages five and six of your project, your agenda, excuse me. Oh, I like it.
I brought a visual tonight.
Nice.
All right. So, good evening, mayor and councillors. The staff memo in the packet discusses changed conditions that were encountered during construction of the 2023 Cured and Placed Pipe Project. These changes will result in a contract increase of approximately 50%. Albany's municipal code requires council approve any change order that's going to increase a contract by 10%, which is why I'm in front of you tonight. So Iron Horse, Affairview, Oregon, they're the contractor that is, was awarded the contract for this project in April of this year. And just to kind of explain what cured in place pipe is, it's a trenchless construction method. The first process is you clean the pipe and then you inspect it with the television camera. After that's done, you pull a resin-soaked fabric liner into the existing pipe. And then we use ultraviolet to cure the pipe. This is a preferred method because that way you don't release any fumes or odors into the air. So it's more environmentally safe and doesn't harm, harm the public. So trenchless construction is less expensive. When you compare it to open trench construction, it's, it's actually 50% cheaper to do a CIPP pipe installation compared to constructing just a typical eight-inch sewer line when you're digging into the ground. So, so I mean, this project would have been twice as expensive had we used open trench construction. The other thing is CIPP is really sometimes the only method that we have to rehabilitate our pipes. A lot of our pipes are close to buildings or in the case of the two pipe segments I'm gonna talk about, they're actually underneath buildings. And so it's really the only option that we do have to replace the pipe. So we, there's five pipe segments that were included in this project. We encountered changed conditions on two of the pipe segments. The first runs underneath the old Gap's bus barn. There was a void that we discovered around one of the service lateral. This was fairly minor. It's the other pipe segment that's contributing to the 50% cost increase. And this one was, was very major. So we have a pipe segment that runs under three buildings. I think there's nine businesses housed in these buildings, five of which are restaurants. During the cleaning and televising operation, the bottom of the pipe actually collapsed underneath one of the restaurants. There was a void that we couldn't have known about that was underneath the pipe. The equipment got stuck, but luckily we had a contractor that could do these trenchless construction methods. And they figured out a way that they installed cured-in-place spot repairs. And then they filled the void internally with grout. And then that way they were able to send a robot into the pipe to retrieve the equipment and then run the cured-in-place pipeliner through the pipe. And the amazing thing about this is none of the businesses were out of business. There was, I think, one, one of the businesses opened one hour late, but other than that sewer service was maintained and they didn't have to restrict their business hours. So, so that was great. And I did, before I, I guess, conclude, I wanted to just, you know, show council a sample of what a cured-in-place pipeliner looks like. It's, it's a great option. It, we don't sacrifice quality or structural integrity by using this, this liner. And so, I mean, we're not losing sleep with this cured-in-place pipeliner under the buildings. That, you know, a better option would be for it not to be there, but it's just not possible given the depth of the line and where it's at here. So in conclusion, there are adequate funds to cover this cost increase. We actually do have contingency funds in the sewer capital to address this, this type of situation. And our recommendation is council approve the contract increase as it's described in the staff memo.
Council, Councilor Kupczynski?
Yes, just one question. How long does it actually take to formally cure so that it's actually functional?
You know, my, the engineers that, that work in my department are, are smart and they would be able to answer that question. I know it, it's done within a day's, day's work. So, I mean, within eight hours.
Councilor Kamaneke?
How rare is this, like the voids that you found? Like how often does that happen? Is that a normal thing or it's happened sometimes or often? Like, I'm just trying to gauge, like, was this totally out of the ballpark as far as what we expected or?
It, it's unusual, so it doesn't happen very often. This, this particular line, we have wanted to, to fix for, for some time. It's been our, on our list of top 20 worst lines in the city. But we had to wait till we had a contractor under contract who could make this type of repair. Because one of the things is we didn't want somebody in there working on the line if something like this happened that wouldn't be able to immediately address the issues.
Councilors Newton, Councilors Smith?
How old was that line underneath the restaurants? That's been in probably the 40s?
Yeah, it's been in there, I don't know, but I mean, probably even before that, the ODOT couplet was constructed there. Yeah, unfortunately, we have a lot of sewer lines in Albany that are located along the back lot line or even under buildings. Albany's not unique. There's a lot of communities, you know, throughout the country that are in that, that same boat. But we have these options to, to use trenchless construction methods now, which is great.
Yeah. As you were describing how this works, it reminded me of the last time I had a tooth filled at the dentist with the ultraviolet light. That's all new from when I was a kid. So that, that helped me understand how this works underground.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask Stacy a question?
Yes, please.
Stacy, can you comment on practices that might accelerate the degradation of sewer pipes? Chris was talking to us earlier today about degreasing substances that when they collect in the bottom might have a corrosive effect?
Yeah, depending on the, the pipe types. So some of your cement liners are gonna be more susceptible to like degreasing agents or other chemicals that may be used in certain business establishments. And so, so they do erode the pipe. The, the plastic pipe or like even the cured-in-place liner, they're more resistant to, to that sort of wear and tear. And then they also have great flow characteristics. So you can see like with the cured-in-place pipeliner, it is making the pipes slightly smaller. But most of the pipes that we install these liners in have rough interiors. And so you're really not losing any capacity when you, when you put a liner in.
And I did hear you say, forgive me.
Please, please.
That that is more resistant to degreasers. And I'm guessing degreasers might have something to do with why you had a failure under a restaurant. Wild and crazy guests.
Yeah.
So Councilor Kupczynski, you have another?
No, I move we approve the contract increase for SS.
I had a question for her myself. So how does this, so the inside diameter goes down, what, quarter inch, half inch? Because it goes down a pipe. Well, this other pipe, the external pipe will then protect this longer, being inside of a shell, right? So how much life was it gonna give us? 50 years, 40 years?
Oh, at least 50 years. Yeah. I mean, the pipes, there's, there's nothing that's going to be, I mean, impacting the pipe now. And the other amazing thing that I wish I could show is that, you know, once the liner's pulled in, there's a robot that goes in and it actually cuts the hole in where the sewer services tap, tap into the line. And, yeah, it'll, it'll, it'll last, you know, at least as long as this PVC pipe would.
Thank you. Now, councillor.
Okay, my move we approve the contract increase for SS 23-02 Cured and Placed Pipe Project.
Second.
I have a motion down to second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Thank you for bringing your presentation. I'd like to visualize it too. Next on the night's agenda is number seven, adoption of the consent calendar. Councilors?
I'd move to adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. Thank you all very much for this evening. Next on the agenda is two. Number, item three there. Was that part of consent calendar, the letters? Okay, tonight's a word about that. Okay, do not worry about that. Next is business from the council. I'll start with Counselor Novak. Excuse me, Counselor Newton?
Sure. First, I wanted to apologize that I was not here on Monday. Wasn't sure if I was able to make it. My grandmother's funeral was a little bit longer than I anticipated it being, which is a good thing, because we got to share lots of fun stories. Secondly, I wanted to take a moment just to thank Sergeant Sam Postuma for his assistance about a week and a half ago. One of my constituents had given me a call and alerted me to a bias incident that was in progress when flyers containing hate speech were distributed throughout several parking lots. My constituent wasn't familiar with what or when to really call the police for. And I was happy to assist her in getting this event reported over to them. And I met her there. And Sergeant Postuma was assigned and came out and met with us, came out, came out and met with myself. And he was extremely helpful and communicative. He spent time searching for the person who was distributing the flyers, while I spent some time cleaning things up. And I also appreciate that he followed up with the Oregon DOJ's bias and hate team to make sure that this incident was reported. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I saw the flyers, too. I got pictures of them, so I appreciate you sending those to us. Thank you, Counselor Montague.
Yeah, I had a constituent who lives near the Boys and Girls Club on Hill reach out to me about public trash, which led me down this really great rabbit hole of trying to figure out how we can be strategic as a city as far as public trash cans. So I met with Julie Jackson from Republic Services today. We had a really great conversation. She's gonna do some research on trash cans, but wanted to bring that before the council and maybe get the conversation started. As we grow as a city, I would love to see us be proactive as far as public trash cans. I know we have some downtown, but there might be some need in other areas. I would really like to see maybe the ACT team, the Transportation Commission, maybe look at ideas for what we can do, maybe areas that are underserved, and maybe come up with some priorities that we can look at and get a quote from Republic Services. You know, it's, it's a conversation that we need to start having now, so that in the future, we're not, we're not trying to catch up.
Yeah, sooner than later.
Yeah.
I agree. And I noticed, I wish we had them near, at all bus stops.
Yeah, near bus stops would be good. And, and maybe even talking to, you know, local businesses that maybe have, don't have an outside garbage and maybe should have an outside garbage. So I, I would love to, you know, have that. Commission, maybe look at that and start having that conversation.
Thank you, is that it, Jack?
Yeah, that's it.
Counselor Kopczynski?
Yes, we had a great presentation from Crystal and Bobby on Give a Hoot. I wish I could say I could be there, but on that same day, I'll be at the Carousel from 7:00 AM to 4:30 PM for our carnival. So, but I wish them well.
There'll be, there'll be further opportunities. Thank you. Counselor Novak?
Thank you. Counselor Kopczynski reminded me, and perhaps I should mention, although I don't know if Bobby and Crystal are listening at this point, but I was all excited about the 19th until I remembered that we have a special event at the restaurant. So I will not be joining on the 19th, but I will come on the next opportunity. So, and I also, I held off with thanks to a particular staff member on Monday because he wasn't here, and he's still not here. So I'm gonna go ahead and say it now. I want to publicly thank Matthew Retgers for his help with a couple of constituents. And I want to thank all the staff for helping me all the time with a lot of different things. So Matthew, if you are here and I don't see you, anyway, you'll see this eventually and just know how much you are appreciated. And to all the staff, please know, I tremendously appreciate you. I really do. The other thing is, a constituent brought something to my attention today, that the construction that's going on at Queen and Elm, and I know many of you have probably been in that area, and I have been when I had to be. But a constituent brought to my attention the fact that there is at least one business that has been tremendously harmed by all of that. I didn't realize they didn't have any access. I don't know if you know, I think it's called Burger Queen? Or Fay's Burgers or something like that?
Yes, right there by West Albemarle.
Yeah, and I've eaten her burgers, and they're really good. But apparently, her business is really suffering with all of this. So I want to bring to the council's attention, and whomever, staff, everybody, that, are you Fay? You are Fay, aren't you? Okay, I was hoping you might say something during business of the public. But is it okay if I say something since I'm addressing your business? Because, okay. Okay, and maybe I should yield to Fay?
No, she, that's your time.
Okay, so anyway, the point is, I didn't realize that there was no access to her business. So if I understood, a friend of ours who brought this to my attention said that you haven't had any access to your burger joint with the construction going on there, unless I misunderstood.
Mr. Mayor, it's not the appropriate time for that.
But I will tell you this, as an insurance agent, if she has a business owner policy, there, she can file a claim for loss of business.
And let me give you, let me give you a card, and we can carry the conversation on.
Is that it?
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll end there, thank you. Yes.
Counselor Smith?
I have three items this evening. First is, I hope other people were on the mailing list for the call for volunteers for Northwest Art and Air Festival next weekend. I'm looking forward to my stint as a shuttle driver right before the Night Glow. I know I'll have plenty of customers. It's, there are all kinds of opportunities for people to volunteer. I checked the registry of shuttle drivers and then everybody else who does greeting and booth sitting and fetching and carrying and all kinds of stuff. There are lots of opportunities. It's a lot of fun, great way to meet constituents, to meet visitors, to the community, to check out the merch available for sale and get some great food. So if you've got time, please sign up. Parks and Rec will love you for it. Item number two is in response to our online public comment on Monday regarding fireworks. I wanted, I had a follow-up email from Angela McCarty this morning asking what we were, where that stood, what the council was going to do, considering making any changes in how we manage recreational, illegal, noisy fireworks. So this might be a good time to talk about that. If city manager might have anything to contribute and along those lines.
Well, I know we have spoken about it at the staff level. You know, there's pluses and minuses both ways. Shane Wooton, Chief Wooton is here. Captain Drum is here and can comment on it. Or if the council wants, we can make that an agenda item and come back and present to you on those pluses and minuses. But it's not as simple as simply banning fireworks. There's very serious enforcement implications that have to do with workload. And as you can imagine, on a, on a holiday weekend or middle of the week, police and fire are already responding to a lot of other calls and higher priority calls. So it's, it's not a simple issue of enforcement.
So staff likes from the bring back discussion?
Please. Thank you. Item number three, as we go into our six-week break for the summer, one of the things that I am doing is reacquainting myself with the City Council manual that's online. I read all the way through it a couple days ago for the first time since I was elected. And I learned some things. I'd forgotten some things. And it was, it was just a very good refresher on Robert's rules, which don't seem to stick very well sometimes. A good refresher on interpersonal relations among councilors about how we handle decision-making, staff relations, basic ethics. It's, it's, there's good stuff in there. And it's, it's easy to read through. It's like twenty-four pages, very well-written. So congratulations to the staff on that. And I just think it's a, it's a good time to step back, take a deep breath, reevaluate what we do, who we are, and what we're, how we're serving Albany. That's, that's my, my plans around other vacation-type stuff for the next few weeks.
Thank you. You know, I'm glad you brought that up. I actually, I sent it out to a group of mayors that were asking for what, what we were doing. And I sent.
You're off mic, sir.
I sent it out to the mayor's listserv, and so I'll be speaking with a group of mayors this week over at the Oregon Mayors Conference about our, our council, council rules. I have a couple things. One, I'd like to thank Giving a Hoot for being here this evening, watching it grow, watching people come out and work, spilling coffee. But it's really nice when people honk their horn or they yell and wave at them for doing the good work. But we also like, people need to slow down. There was a motorcyclist this weekend, or yesterday, that went down First Avenue, probably doing fifty miles per hour. It was a brown Harley-Davidson. I couldn't find him when I was driving through the neighborhood. But speeding on First Avenue, when they come off the bridge, is, is pretty bad. Especially during the summer when there's kids around. And I'll, I'll be gone for tomorrow through Saturday to the Oregon Mayors Association. So if you have anything for me to take with me, to share with other mayors, please do email it to me. And then I had a phone call from Zipley Fiber Optic, the vice president, Jessica Epley, about the stuff that's going on on social media regarding Zipley. And she did inform me yesterday that they fired a contractor for being off protocol and not following procedures of Zipley. So she has taken an active role in correcting some of those behaviors. And so she's been committed to dealing directly with the people that are committing those, I would say, infractions. You know, it's hardly how they interact with, with our citizens and our community. So they are serious about handling those issues. And other than that, I will turn it now over to the city manager.
I have two things. One is to remind you that tomorrow evening is the last River Rhythms concert of the season. And come down to see Counselor Montague open it up with Fog Hat.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor.
And then just to wish you all a great break, a good five-week break from this routine.
Thank you, Peter. And one last thing for me, my grandson turned seven yesterday, and my son turned thirty-two today. So, thank you very much, and I will adjourn the meeting after I give you the next dates. We are gonna meet again Wednesday, September 20th, a special session regarding the judge candidate, interviewing the judge candidates for the municipal court judge. On Monday, September 25th, a joint meeting with the Lynn County Board of Commissioners. And, and then Wednesday, September 27th, is our next city council meeting. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting.